Okay, at this time, I will call to order the Tuesday, March 19th, 2019, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I ask you to bow your heads in silent prayer or reflection, particularly considering the victims in the massacre in Christchurch, New Zealand, as well as the folks in the Midwest that are struggling with floods and rising waters even as we speak. If you'll please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
The pleasure of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Jones, I don't believe there are any adjustments to the agenda. Is that correct?
No, sir, no adjustments.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as it is published?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimously. This evening, we do have a special proclamation and recognition for the Emergency Communication Proclamation for April as 9/11 Education Month and April 14th through the 20th as Telecommunicator Week. That's a matter that was placed on our consent agenda, and we will, I think, probably be appropriate just to move to adopt the consent agenda. Why don't we, why don't you run down the consent agenda real quick? We'll do that.
Okay. Do we want to come back to the appointment before the board?
And then we'll come back and take care of the presentation, yeah.
Okay, the appointment before the board presentation.
We'll do that last.
Okay, okay, perfect. The following items were presented to the Board of Commissioners at our 5:00 pre-agenda meeting and were agreed to be placed on the consent agenda. The first item is a request from ECOM to proclaim the month of April as 9/11 Education Month, and April 14th through the 20th is Telecommunicator Week. The next item is a request from Emergency Management for approval of a resolution granting the authority to execute and file applications for federal assistance from Tropical Storm Michael. There is a request from the Solid Waste Department for approval of an agreement in the amount of $87,780 to purchase a lube truck body from Taylor Pump and Lift Incorporated. A request from Tax Administration for approval of the February refunds and releases. A request from Administration to adopt the local government records retention and disposition schedule as provided by the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. And finally, a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes from the meeting on March 5th, 2019, with two corrections under the adjournment section.
Okay, is there any further discussion on any of the consent items? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Commissioner Norman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimously. Item 8.1, related to the approval of a proclamation. And prior to reading that proclamation, I would ask for Tara Default to please share with us the background of 9/11 Telecommunicator Week and all the other things this encompasses.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Thank you for spending, giving us the time this evening to speak with you. And before I start, I'd like to thank all of you for our new facility. We are greatly excited about getting to move in there in May, and we thank you very much for all of those gifts that have been stowed upon us. My name's Tara Default, and I'm a full-time telecommunicator with Iredell County, and I'm also head of the PR Committee. The Public Relations Committee has a goal to put a face to the voice that's on the radio and on the telephone when we speak for 9/11. And the way that we do that is that we go in the community, to community events and schools, and give an information and education time. By being seen and holding those appointments, we are able to debunk myths and provide accurate information on why things happen the way that they do. Daily, we have people who call that believe that we are the people that are actually responding to their homes. We actually have people that call and wonder why we're asking the questions that we're Last year, we took over 2,269,000 calls, but the average person only calls 9/11 once in their life. So if we had the ability to prepare people for what to expect when the time comes, which is usually the most, the worst day of their life, we can more accurately and fluently help those people. I apologize. There are also people that have to call frequently due to their jobs, and if we are able to speak with them and tell them what to expect when they call, nursing home workers, they are able to give us the answers quicker without delay of patient care for their, for their people. So nationally, April has been designated as 9/11 Education Month, and even though our committee works throughout the year at the community events and in the schools, this gives us a gateway to be able to go in and educate further people. So we're also given an appreciation week, which allows ourselves as telecommunicators and the community, if they see fit, to be able to recognize us and celebrate us for the work that we do, even though a lot of people don't see it. So I ask that you will please sign into, or enter the proclamation for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Is there any comments or questions?
One question. You got a chance, could you send the information to us on the number of calls you get per day, per week, and per month?
I know that we, I actually have the month in my phone. I can email it to you now. It's broken down by month and types of calls, whether it's law enforcement, EMS, or fire, or rescue. I have that at this time with me, and it's for the whole year of 2018.
Okay.
I can email that to you directly. I don't know that we have the daily or the weekly on hand at this moment, but we could probably get that for you.
Well, I think if you send that to us, we'll know more about what you're doing. We don't have an idea of the number of calls you're getting. You said 269,000?
Mm-hmm. It's actually, it was 269,069, I believe.
Yeah, well, we need that breakdown so we can understand what you guys are doing. You understand?
Absolutely. We had a last, it's almost been a month ago, our call volume tripled in about 45 minutes due to an interstate fire that was from the 54 to the 42, and we had, in just 45 minutes, it tripled the entire time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, at this time, we've already approved the proclamation that you've requested, and I'd like to read that into the record and for the benefit of everyone that is watching. This is proclamation, the National 9/11 Education Month, April 2019, and April 24th through, April 14th through 20th, 2019, National Telecommunicator Week. Whereas, 9/11 is nationally recognized as the number to call in an emergency to receive immediate help from police, fire, emergency medical services, or other appropriate emergency response entities. And whereas 9/11 was designated by Congress as the national emergency call number under the Wireless Communications and Public Safety Act of 1999, Public Law 106-81, and whereas the Enhanced 9/11 Act of 2004, Public Law 108-494, established Enhanced 9/11 as a high national priority as part of our nation's homeland security and public safety. And whereas people of all ages use 9/11, and it is critical to educate the public of all ages on the proper use of 9/11. And whereas a growing segment of the population, including the deaf, hard-of-hearing, deaf-blind, and individuals with speech disabilities, increasingly communicate with non-traditional text, video, and instant messaging communication services, and anticipate that these services will be able to connect directly to 9/11. And whereas thousands of 9/11 calls are made every year by children properly trained on the use of 9/11, resulting in lives saved, which underscores the critical importance of training children early in life about 9/11. And whereas there is widespread misuse of the 9/11 system, including prank and non-emergency calls, which can result in costly and inefficient use of 9/11 and emergency response resources. Now, therefore, I, James B. Mallory III, County Commissioner of Iredell, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as National 9/11 Education Month and April 14th through 20th, 2019, as National Telecommunicators Week. I call upon all government officials, parents, teachers, school administrators, caregivers, business leaders, nonprofit organizations, and the people of the United States to observe this month with training, events, and activities to educate the public on 9/11. Furthermore, to honor during this week those public safety communicators who have dedicated their lives to providing this vital emergency service, dated this 9th day of March, 2019. Signed, James B. Mallory III, Chairman. You know, on a daily, hourly, and minute-by-minute exercise of what you do, you know, you change people's lives, you have to be able to react to a phone call not knowing what's going to be on there. It's, it's an incredibly stressful job that you have. You're the tip of the spear, the first person anybody reaches in a long chain of response that, as is mentioned, can cover a number of different emergency services. So to get to the right place at the right time with the right equipment and the right capabilities, it all has to be distilled by that telecommunicator, and it has to be done in a stressful environment where you're dealing with people that are under a great deal of duress, who may have difficulty in communicating all of the elements that you need to properly dispatch that assistance. So we know it is a very demanding position. We thank all of you and your fellow telecommunicators for the job that you do. Every time we have an emergency situation, you're there. It doesn't matter how long it takes, you know, you can survive on pizza for 24 hours and 36 hours and just a little bit of sleep. But, you know, while everybody else has been told to stay home and be in their homes and not leave because dangerous conditions, you all have, you know, made it out to do your job or stayed there and not gone home, as well as all of our other emergency services that are all part of that team. So we're excited that you are going to be able to have a new home, that you're going to have a, a quantum leap in capabilities and in the ability to be able to do your job in a way that recognizes the importance of what you do within the right environment, and that it will make you more efficient and less stressed out as you deal with all these stressful situations. So we're excited that come May or June, you should be officially cutting the ribbon, and we look forward to participating in that event.
We are very excited. Thank you.
In the meantime, if, and I know we have Candice Regency, our Director of Emergency Communications, and her staff, if you all would come up here, I'll go ahead and present this to you all, and we can get a quick picture, if everybody can come in, and you can get home to your families.
Middle or side?
Uh-uh. At this time, we will circle back to item six, which is an appointment before the board, and this is a request from Mr. Dave DeFaire to discuss the potential adoption of the quote-unquote brunch bill ordinance. So, Mr. DeFaire, if you please come up to the podium, and if you'll announce for the record your name and address, would appreciate that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board for considering this request. My name is Dave DeFaire. I live in 118 Island View Road. Address is actually Statesville. It's on Lake Norman. And I'm the owner of Davistay Vineyards. And you want me to continue now with the request?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Yeah, basically, my understanding is that up until some time ago, all facilities in North Carolina couldn't open before noon, and then I think a brunch bill was passed by the North Carolina State Government, I believe, and to allow opening at 10:00 a.m. on Sundays. And I think this has to be ratified jurisdiction by jurisdiction, and so my understanding is that the City of Statesville, and the City of Mooresville, and the Town of Troutman have adopted this brunch bill to allow for early opening of restaurants and, and stores, grocery stores to sell alcoholic beverages at, beginning at 10:00 a.m. And I guess since we're, we're just on the outskirts of the Town of Troutman, it doesn't apply to us, and, and I, my understanding is that this needs to be a county approval, and I'm not sure if it's specifically for Davistay Vineyards, or if this has other implications for other entities. But just to give you a brief rationale of why we feel it's important for our operation is that I think because of the early opening in, in Troutman, and Statesville, and Mooresville, residents of this county and the surrounding area just assume that, that we're open at 10:00 a.m. So we'll, we'll often, our tasting room manager always shows up at 11:00 to get ready for the 12:00 opening, but she'll have customers rolling in and wanting to have a tasting or buy a bottle of wine, and they can't. She has to tell them, oh, you've got to wait till noon. And also, we, we do a lot of special events, weddings, and corporate events, and so on, and we do get requests for bridal showers and baby showers, you know, for a Sunday morning start, and we say, fine, you can come at 10:00 a.m., but nothing, no alcohol until noon. So basically, we'd, we'd like to hopefully bring, bring it into alignment with, with some of the other entities in our area.
Any questions for Mr. DeFaire?
Sir, are, is all of your alcohol served on premise and remains on premise?
Yes, certainly, well, anything, anything that's open, of course, the tastings, and if a person orders a bottle of wine for consumption, but they're free to buy alcohol or a bottle of wine and take it home with them. Yeah.
Any other comments, questions?
You know, I'd just like to state, with the brunch bill, it does give us the option to or not to, so it'll, it'll be a decision that we'll have to ponder.
Of course. Okay, Mr. DeFaire, this is an appointment, so that you could share with us your concerns or desires, and I appreciate your taking the time to do that. The issue is not before us to entertain, and the Chair would recognize it as an issue if one of the five Commissioners was to want to revisit that issue to change our policy or consider changing our policy, which is currently the 12:00 opening.
Right.
I don't, you know, we'll take your request under advisement, and if somebody wants to discuss it further, then they can place that matter on the agenda. If there is no one, then, then, then we've taken it under advisement.
Okay.
But you, you sort of mentioned one possible way of being able to address the issue. Our municipalities have a more liberal approach to what goes on Sunday morning, and if you're close to Troutman, you may want to talk about being annexed in the City of Troutman in order to be able to do that, but it's a jurisdictional issue.
Okay, right. So for me, the process would be to try and encourage one of the individuals that I'm sitting here to, to present that.
That's correct, and if a Commissioner would like to have the matter heard, then we'll certainly have it heard, and we'll vote on it.
Right.
But barring that, and of course, you have to get three out of five.
Right.
To pass, if there's not any burning interest to pursue the matter and that, or change our current posture, then I would suggest you look to the Town of Troutman.
All right.
Okay. And appreciate what you do, and I know DeVest has a very great reputation as a great corporate and local citizen, so we appreciate what you do.
We try. We do our best. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
This evening, under items nine and 10, there are no announcements nor appointments to any boards or commissions. Is there any unfinished business? Hearing none. This is a public comment period, Amy, any?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't have anyone signed up, so I'll ask of anyone in attendance if they would like to avail themselves of an opportunity to comment. Well, seeing and hearing none, we'll move on. Any new business? No new business. Ms. Jones, could you please render the County Managers' Report?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Mallory. Just a few items before you. On the bench is the, this year's for 2019 and 2020 legislative goals that are being given to all of our legislators for consideration, and if you remember, we participated in this process and submitted some goals to be considered by the NCACC. We had a representative that went and advocated diligently on our behalf regarding our goals with Commissioner McNeely. That actually made it into the publication, as far as a photo.
Kind of the centerfold.
There, there you go. Everybody can go and get his autograph on the photo. But just to, just to let you know that these are the goals that will, that the NCACC, which is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, will be advocating on the county's behalf with our legislators during the legislative biennium. One thing that I did want to point out, we take for granted a lot of people that are behind the scenes that make everything work for our meetings tonight, and one group is our IT Department, our Information Technology Department, and I just want to tell them thank you, because when they came today, and they normally go, and they power up all of our equipment to make sure everything's working properly and test it, we had an equipment failure with our computer system, and everything crashed as far as being able to televise our meetings. They worked all day to find a workaround, so we were able to televise this meeting. So very, very few times do you realize the people that are behind the scenes and how much work they put into it, but they do, and I want to publicly thank them for all of their time and efforts. We have one sitting up there right now, working mission control and cameras, but they, we have a great department, and they put a lot of time and effort, and it goes unnoticed a lot of times, but we were very thankful that we have such skilled staff that could find a workaround to get us televised, so thank you for that.
Well, take a bow. Thank you.
And finally, just to let everyone know, and let the Board know as well, that the administrative offices for our Parks and Recreation Department formally moved yesterday. They relocated from this facility to the Barium Springs property. So our administrative offices are now in Troutman at the Barium Springs property adjacent to the Recreation Center, which we had the grand opening ribbon cutting last week. So just to let everybody know that they have now officially relocated.
Anything further?
That's all.
I know, I almost caught a piece of equipment, but I think it was French. It said "fragile" on it, but it hit the ground. So I hate that, but I was close, I was almost there.
All right. We did have a closed session at the conclusion of our pre-agenda meeting. We discussed matters relative to property acquisition pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A5. There were no action items to report out relative to that. We had presentations on three proposals from our Economic Development Team pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A4, and three good items to report out, and I would ask if there are some motions.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on April 2nd, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $400,000 over a three-year period for Project G2, based on a $25 million investment in Iredell County.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimously. We have another motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on April 2nd, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $72,000 over a five-year period for Project Spool, based on a $4.1 million investment in Iredell County.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimously. And our final economic development package.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a public hearing on April 2nd, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $63,000 over a five-year period for Project Sport, based on a $3,631,374 investment in Iredell County.
Motion by Commissioner Hap. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimously. You know, these are three projects that are just, three of many that are in the pipeline that have been worked on assiduously by our Economic Development Corporation team headed by Russ Rogerson and capable hands, and we are saddened to have heard over the last month that Russ will be moving to West Virginia to work with a unique umbrella organization, pulling together a number of different economic development organizations, local chamber, and tying into a university initiative. So it's a unique opportunity, and it's close to family, and we understand the difficult decision that was to move forward and, and move up there, but we support Russ and thank him for the great job that he's done for Iredell County, as he shepherded the merger of the Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation and the Greater Statesville Regional Development Corporation, which has been a tremendous boon for this county in terms of presenting all of the opportunities in the county, from the southern to the northern, and, and a complete package, and the results, I think, speak for themselves. So we understand the Economic Development Corporation Board is working on a search process, probably take three to process, probably take three to four months to complete. After that, we will have a new director. In the meantime, Chris Younger is stepping up and not going to miss a beat. Highly qualified team member and the rest of the staff likewise are just going to be taking care of business. So any, anything further from any members, any Commissioners? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
A motion by Commissioner McNeely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.